Folks, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Before we start with the pledge, I just wanna say that the board here, as well as Owen County's thoughts and prayers go out to Brett and Wendy Kincaid family that lost their life over the weekend here in our county. I also wanna thank all of our first responders, 911 dispatch, DNR, Highway Department, everybody that participated, I'm not sure if we're getting somebody, but we're in great gratitude to all of those folks and departments, and we thank you very much. So with that being said, can we start with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, would you care to lead some prayer this morning?
Father, we come to you this morning humbly, and we ask for your comfort, your peace to be with the families of those who have suffered devastation and lost this last weekend. Lord, we ask for Father guidance concerning that, and your blessings come upon them means in order to recover and look ahead to the future. Father, we thank you for the wisdom and the insight that you're giving to people in this county in order to advance and move forward from these things, Lord, and how to deal with those in the future. And we thank you, Father, that you're moving in a mighty way upon people's hearts in order to accomplish what you desire to be done here, Father. We give you glory and praise for protecting those of us that are here today, Lord, and for things not being worse than what they have been, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Greg, if I didn't mention the highway, I meant to. Okay, you guys were a big part of what took place there, so. Approval of minutes due to the weather issue, and the courthouse was locked up with no power, so we're gonna let Sheila slide till our next meeting here in a couple of weeks. Approval of claims, we have payroll, $248,690.80. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve payroll for $248,690.80.
Got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Regular claims, $371,000.59. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve regular claims for $371,000.59.
Motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Out-of-cycle claims, total of $26,499.93. We have Toshiba, COVID immunization insurance, Epic Insurance, Luke Heckman Highway, and utilities, again, for a total of $26,499.93. It's not too awful, biggest stack here, guys, let's just go ahead and do those.
Make motion to approve out-of-cycle claims at $26,499.93.
Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second? Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
In the matter of the payroll discussion, we've been asked, the commissioners have, over the last few months, and actually going back for a few years to help with the payroll, we provided that with some funding, but due to the transition of the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, we are going to rescind all payroll comments and contracts of any kind. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to rescind those votes to the payroll.
Make motion to rescind that for the pay car on payroll.
Got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Apologize to the departments out there that desperately need some help, but at this time enough will not be dealt with.
Don't drop that thing on my hand.
Cessor contract.
Yes, sir.
How are you this morning, Dusty?
Ah, getting there. We are without power at home, so bear with me.
You're still one of the few that's out there.
Yep.
I knew there was still some.
Totally me, forgive me. Eagle View contract, the whole store here, I've sent it to you, we've talked about it for eight months. Got contracts all lined up, anybody have any questions?
Biggest thing, it's already been approved in your budget?
Yes, it's already in my budget. It is web-based, so it's easy-peasy, lemon-squeezy. There's nothing we need to use it, there's no, it'll be beneficial really though, the entire county because of all these images, we'll get a hard drive with the image, images of the whole county, so we'll have it each time they fly, but then it's their system, that map will overlay, or think map, that map will overlay in our GIS, they even have an app that we can use that on our phone, we can have this on our phone, so.
I see, I think something where we texted back, if that works with that WT?
It does, yeah.
That we was proposing to.
Yeah.
It all works together.
Yes, it all works together.
And Dana's looked at the contract, and everything's good there, so I think it's a big plus for the county and your department. I have no questions or concerns.
No, I have none, aye.
It appears that it only requires one signature, so ask for a motion that the president has approved to sign that.
Make motion to approve Eagle View and our president concerned.
Got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll get this signed, and we'll get it to Sheila, and you're, anything else?
Nope, that's it, I appreciate it.
Susan. WTH live event manager.
Yes, I have a contract for, proposal for what is considered an events manager, which would add on to our current mapping software. It would also be for live events, so anything happening within the county, the trees down, flooded roads, things like that can be put on the, on our desktop computers moments after it's placed on there, and it would be then also placed on the online GIS within seconds, so then we'd know where roads were closed, trees are down, stuff like that.
Events such as we had this weekend.
Correct.
And for those that were in the meeting, Chris and Kathleen and Greg, Rachel was here, I think it's a really good program, and it'll be something that will be controlled. The information will go to 911 dispatch, and Kathleen's department will kinda put that information out on the county website and different things like that.
She did agree to it, I think.
Yeah. So the information's going to the dispatch center anyway, through these departments over the radio, so it only makes sense that that's, you know, where it comes from, so. And Susan, you've got the funds in your cash balance, you just need to go ask for a?
Yes, yes, I've already put that request.
Okay. So with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the WTH event manager program?
Make motion to approve the WTH live event proposal.
Got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you guys need to sign the last page.
Okay, let me finish this one here, and I'll get that taken care of. We'll put that in the basket. And Dana, you looked over this as well?
Yes, we don't find this, everything is done.
That one's done, this one here requires all three of us's signature. Thank you, Susan. Highway Department.
Good morning.
Morning. Well, you guys had a long weekend, still got a lot out there to deal with.
Commissioners, I need to report, right now, we are working on 19 roads that have some sense of a closure in regard to trees and power lines. Worked with power companies this morning, and we are being successful. I believe that there's probably been three of those 19 open since I've been sitting here, but I can't confirm that yet, but progress is being made. We applied through LTAP to become a CDL training site. It was something that didn't really know whether we'd get picked. We were picked in the first round to do that. I had picked a trainer, he trains heavy equipment now, he is a CDL holder with all endorsements up to hazmat, and that would be Mr. Tim Newton. We will train our people, our own employees on site, and then at the end of this training period, there will be a test out at a B&amp;B location at a cost of $300. Commissioners, I believe this value to be an $8,300 value. If you go to IV Tech, you go to Wagler, any of the local places, it appears that that is what it would cost someone to do. I think we're privileged to receive this on the first round. I would ask that you allow us to do that, but then allow me to work with the county attorney to come up with an amicoration table where we put $8,300 worth of investment into an employee that they need to stay for a certain period of time, or they would owe us back.
Absolutely, and you and I touched on this briefly, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to maintain employees. Let you work with the county attorney to come up with a plan for that schedule, and once that's put together, we'll bring it back for final approval. I don't know that we necessarily need to take a vote on it this morning until it actually comes back in the form of a policy, but let's proceed forward, yes.
Well, I will get that information within the week to Dana. I'll get you all LTAP information and B&amp;B information that is required. It is going to take a period of time to get our trainer trained, so I'm looking at about three months before we get this up.
Up and running, okay. Does LTAP actually come down and help us set this up, or is this something that we do online to learn the information?
We do it online, LTAP will spend a day with us on site, and then we will spend a week at Purdue at an LTAP site.
Sounds good.
Next thing I have for you commissioners, is the repair on Bridge 52. Working with United Consulting, we've come up with a solution instead of replacing the old bridge at a cost of nearly $500,000. I've reached out to E3 Bridge, EH Bridge, and CLR. CLR was the only one that came forth with a quote. I did sit down and review that with them, so I could explain it some, I did not get it until this morning.
We'll just let Dana take a look at it, and then we can have a discussion.
Basically, commissioners, when you look at the figures, if we would need to drive four pilings on the bridge, it would cost us somewhere about $83,000. Bill, CLR is here, we actually believe that we can get by with two, but it will come down to our engineering firm exactly how many, but it's $9,410 a piling.
And then that includes pouring a new deck after the pilings are set, correct?
Repairing the deck.
Repairing it.
It's not an entire deck, we're gonna cut the deck, and then they'll put that section back.
Okay.
It is a complete job, commissioners. Highway Department will do nothing, it will go to the contractor.
Quick glance, the project is between $50,000 and $150,000. Greg did request quotes from three different vendors, which is what is required. They don't have to submit a quote if they don't want to, but he has to request those. So those have been done, the pricing that they have, mobilization and de-personalization and general conditions is one lump sum of $9,975. The underpinning with reinforced concrete, as detailed herein, is $33,900. And the driving steel H pile within the limits of the underpinning is $9,410 per pile.
So we have a grand total on that, Dana?
No, doesn't look like it. And you said there would be two piles?
We believe there will be two piles, it should be up to four, so you need, at the 9,000 number each, we would have to count. Thank you, commissioners, I believe the reason we received one quote on this, it's not an easy job to cut that deck and drive piling between those teams.
Now, the underpinning with reinforced concrete, is there any, it says $33,900 bent. Is that complete, there would be no other fees?
No.
So the, if four piles were required, the total would be $81,515, so it could be approved for a maximum amount of?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, five, one, five.
Yeah, eighty-one, five, one, five.
Thank you.
Any discussions on this, commissioners?
Now, we've talked about this cost savings big time.
Well, yeah, we're going down from almost $500,000, as Greg had mentioned, to $82, roughly, so do I hear a motion to approve the?
That's for four pillars?
Yeah, we're gonna include four, but it may only need two, so it could be reduced by roughly $18,000, $19,000 once it's opened up, and that'll be determined, but worst-case scenario, we're looking at $81,515 even.
Bridge number?
Fifty-two. So do I hear a motion to approve the CLR quote for $81,515 for Bridge 52 for pilings and deck replacement or repair?
I make that motion.
I have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. You're all aware that I spoke to each one of you individually in regard to drainage issues and some small structure replacement in your own districts. In Commissioner Lowe and Commissioner Curry's districts, the issues that I spoke to you about, be able to put estimates together and numbers to, they will work. Commissioner Burton, in the location that I spoke to you about, that has a hard limestone bed, and the bobscocks are a lot of work, so we will have to address that with a bridge.
Okay.
I will bring those to you next meeting with cost outlays. We will, Commissioner Lowe's, we will do in-house. Commissioner, one of Commissioner Curry's districts is at the intersection of 46 and Old Patrickburg Road, which keeps decaying. There was a car off end at the last time, I would like to get that fixed ASAP. I believe it's gonna come in somewhere around $38,000 to put in the proper structure there.
Now, that's been needed there for a while.
And it may end up being cheaper to have that done by contractor, so I will bring that to you, or at least save on time with other things at hand. But I would ask that that be, when I bring that to you the next meeting, because the last flooding issues, that is a public safety hazard, and we get that up and on the list ASAP.
That's the one at Miller Flats?
Yes, yeah.
Old Patrickburg Road.
Yeah.
Also, gentlemen, you have in your package the cost outweigh from not this storm, but the last, March 24th to the 28th, and that's the length of time that we took to get you straight and back up, and the cost of that work was $14,735.16. FEMA rates aren't added to those, those are actual costs that's been outweighed. We do have the software on our system, commissioners, we are prepared with the declaration and emergency, have everything, EMA, when work is complete with FEMA rate, hopefully.
Yeah, with that declaration being signed, it's very important that we keep track of all of our expenses countywide, from all of our departments, extended overtime, things like that, so we appreciate you keeping these records, for sure.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, have a good day.
They can get in and head out there now?
Yes. Their hard word.
Little flock, how's that going?
Greg?
How's little flock going?
Well, right now, little flock, because the weather's just been shut down, we've got a large amount of rain, we can get the pump just as quick as we can get back in and work, we'll get back to it.
Select officials, department heads, anyone?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just wanna publicly thank our Chris and Kathleen and Jack and Greg for the amazing job that they did during this. I mean, that hit like within a mile of our home, and they were there checking on everybody and getting things. It was just, I'm so proud to be a part of Owen County, and they work together amazingly, and I'm just very thankful.
Yeah, until you're in one of those, that goes, it's scary, it is scary, it is scary.
I've got something. So, again, to build off of that on behalf of the coroner's office, we do wanna thank every person who played part in helping us get through that natural disaster. It started right, I feel like at dispatch, you know, is the safe, if something went wrong, Alan was in, Lee and Susan were on, where, working. He came in when he, you know, didn't have to, he helped out a lot, the day shifters the next day, they were working really hard, the night shifters the next night, they were working really hard, the ground crews, you know, the EMS first responders, everybody involved, they put in a lot of effort and a lot of sleepless nights. Assuming we, you know, were made aware that there were in fact two deceased people located in the camper without asking, without hesitation, County Highway Department stepped up and helped us get those trees out of the way, get things clear, and we are eternally grateful for your help. One thing that, I know you guys have talked about today, Joel told me about something that we need to make sure is out there in the open, is as coroners, we are protected and held to the standard of Indiana code, I've got it here if you wanna hear it, but it's 36-2-14-22, providing climate-controlled environment. As most of you know, our cooler went down during the power outage, and we, at the time, we were like, oh, you know, no big deal, we didn't have anyone in there, and then, you know, the next day is when they found the deceased individuals, and we didn't have anywhere to store them. So because we have a wonderful network, we were able to call around, we were able to find a place to store them, but as we move forward, and in the event that we ever do have severe weather like that again, I think that it's time that we discuss having backup power, maybe a generator or something put down there for us.
And so you know we've discussed that this morning?
Yeah, as well told me, he said he was going in and looking up, so there's that, and then this one's kinda down the road, but I just need some advisement on what I can do, so I've reached out to that QPA that you guys told me to for the vehicle, and I can only get one quote. So how do I move forward with getting the stuff that's going to appease?
As long as it's a state bid price, you only need the one anyway.
Okay.
So just present that to us, the biggest thing that we'll run into is funding, you don't have a vehicle funded in your budget.
Right.
So it'll have to go to the council for additional appropriation.
Which I think there's not a lot of for this year, so.
So.
Are we able to, aside from QPA consolidation, is there any possibility that we can look at used vehicles?
We could, but normally the price of the QPA is so close to what the used market is right now, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I say that you go ahead and bring that quote to us for approval, and then you can go to the council to find out if the funding's available.
And then if we do get sidelined, like what normally happens, we can come back and maybe look at something different?
Exactly.
Okay, 'cause, you know, we're seventeen?
You're not shut down.
We're seventeen years in with that vehicle contract, we're gonna have to be something.
And it's a family passenger van, it's not a corner vehicle, so know what you're dealing with, yeah.
All right, thank you, guys.
How's your office coming?
Good, we've got everything moved in except the computers, so.
And it should be all wired up for that, so.
Yeah, we're getting there, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, Kevin?
Yeah, so, as you guys know, the big event, she kinda stole some of my info, but I'm gonna go over it again, it's okay, because I love when other departments recognize our department, because it doesn't happen a whole lot. So as she said, I did have two employees self-deployed to the dispatch center. Alan, when the tornado sirens went off, he deployed to the center. As soon as the storm went through, we had Eugene Brown, he lives in the northern part of the county, he cut his way to the center to be able to make it there, so they were, had other employees that day shift came in early to help relieve night shift, and then the night shift came in early to help with the additional day shift, so we definitely had staffing, everybody worked well together, and it was covered. So some of the concerns that we have that happened, and this isn't anything that's new, because we talked about it before, however, this storm just intensified it. As you guys know, dispatch is in a metal building, and whenever it rains, it's loud. We had 10 minutes of the initial incident when we were receiving phone calls from a cormix creek where we could not hear our callers because of the storm, thunder rolling over, lightning hail hitting the building, three people in there screaming to the people on the phone so they could try to hear the person talking to them. One of them was two people in a camper that were trapped in their camper that did not go to the shelter prior to the storm coming through, so that's, it's kind of a concern. And I know we discussed this, and I have looked into soundproofing items within the dispatch center, so the only thing that, since the building is already built, is like soundproofing boards, but that does not keep exterior noise out, that only keeps the interior noise from reverberating within the center itself. So if we still have a large storm that comes through, we're still gonna get all of that rain, thunder, noise into the building. I did reach out to some companies to come in and, after the fact, do the foam insulation in the walls, and there's no one close that really wants or services the Spencer area, unless it's a construction crew that somebody might know that I don't know of down in this area that could do something like that, or at least possibly foam spraying or attic, because that's just blown insulation. Again, since we are in a metal building, just like in, I'm sure everybody felt in their homes, they thought the building was going to explode, because they felt the swell, and then they felt it kinda come back in on itself. At one point, up in our server room, because we have a camera up there, they were looking at the camera, there was so much debris, dust, insulation blowing around in our server room that they thought we lost the top half of our building, is how bad it was. So no water damage, nothing like that, you think it's just accumulation, insulation, dust. So no water damage, nothing like that, you think it's just accumulation, insulation, dust dickers. I need to go check all of our computers, all of our radios, see if I need to blow any of that kinda stuff out because if it was that bad, then you know, it's not good to get inside of a computer, so. Um and then a couple of other things that we had um are some things that, you know, I can talk with Jack, we do have another storm that's supposed to be coming in Tuesday. I already have staffing set for that, um they're already preparing to come in. But we received a lot of phone calls from people that as soon as we set the tornado sirens off, calling us wanting to know if we had a public shelter. Or we're making go shelter because it wasn't safe to shelter in their homes. Um so that I can talk with Jack about to see if maybe try to set something up Tuesday because the storm is supposed to be bigger than what come through this weekend. Um and then just a couple of other things that is dispatch related that they had concerns about from this weekend. What if dispatch gets taken out, where are my people gonna go because our backup is station four? However, station four had damage, they had a door, they lost their tower, radio tower, so the radios wouldn't work there. Um they lost a door or two is what I've heard, that bunch of siding blown off the building. Um so it's just kinda like some, where would we transfer phones? Cause right now our phones would go down to Green County, which could be okay, could not be okay, but how are we also going to get people there should that?
Jack, do you see how that's gonna work?
Um so he has the radio capabilities, um not so much phones, that's something that we're still trying to figure out. Um our phone providers provide some options, it's like a uh phone in a box type situation. Where if we have to evacuate our center, um we can take that, we can take a mobile man or CAD system with us. Um our radios as well, but those come with prices, monthly fees because you have to have like a cell phone service attached to it. Um those kinda things that I'm gonna start looking into, so I'm gonna be worrying about stuff at some point. My budget will not hold this, same situation as coroners, we know general fund, there's not a lot of free money, not a lot of extra money everywhere. But we can go talk on handheld radios all the time, but if we can't receive the phone calls, if we have to leave our our building or something happens in our building, then nobody's going anywhere. So I come to life as a priority that needs to take place.
Absolutely, and please get that information to to move forward. I will get with Steve, our maintenance man, and have him start working on some companies to do some spray foaming, uh some sound deafening, whatever needs to be done. That that kinda falls in his wheelhouse, so we'll put him to work on that for you.
Cause I figured even if we could get some spray foaming, cause I know you can spray foam after the fact after a building is already complete. We have an entire half room that's above dispatch that I don't care if they drill holes in that drywall, nobody sees it. Um it really just needs to be those two walls, those two exterior walls of dispatch and then something on the roof because it's a metal roof. And it's just blown insulation in the attic and it's a big hollow area, so everything just echoes and it's it's horrible.
Hey, you're taking most of your weather on that west wall, the main wall.
John Spencer had it done down there at Shelley Edwards and that sewer apartment. I know that in their metal building, they had that spray cook, I was in there one day and I don't, that's been two or three years ago and I, that'd be a good test on because it's been there for a while.
I can tell you, I I want to speak for all first responder, a lot of monitoring models helping someone kinda get their resources. Your dispatchers were like calm within the storm, but the way they talked, the way they they were trying from a step ahead, it was very impressive.
Well, I appreciate that.
Well, you got some experience down there and that helps too.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, sure does. Uh again, everyone that we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting's done an outstanding job and we appreciate everything that everyone's done. Uh is there anyone else?
Sheriff.
Sheriff?
Yes, um just real quick, I know a lot of people's, I wanna reiterate some of the things, but um you know, a lot of people complain that we're from a small community, everybody knows your business. But when bad things like this happen, um it's kind of a blessing because everybody pulls together and works as a team for the same goal, which is to save lives and serve people that we swore we would. I'm very thankful. From dispatch to the highway department, EMA, EMS, uh all the various fire departments, um they worked with us hand in hand. And and I couldn't have asked for better, uh Greg and and Chad came uh Saturday night, they were out really late helping us on the scene when the two were discovered in the camper. Their skill with uh heavy equipment was was evident where they were able to surgically remove things with a excavator or whatever that machine was they were using. And and I mean, like a like a uh kidding looks, I mean, it was it was amazing. I'm very thankful for everyone in every office, coroner's office was there. My guys, uh you know, I've, once the storm passed, I came out um and I could hear on the radio my guys saying, hey, we can't, we can't drive there, we're gonna have to walk. Um and of course it's still pouring rain, my guys were walking, uh sometimes crawling to get over and under trees and everything to get to this campground. I'm very proud of my guys, they were professional, they worked their butts off. I had majority of my department, other than the ones that were trapped or their vehicles were crushed, um came out on their own, they they weren't called and asked to come out. Um they responded on their own accord, um which which is, as as the leader of the department, I can't, I can't express how good that makes me feel. If my guys care enough about the people of Golden County that they don't have to be asked, the same with Kathleen's people, you don't have to be asked to come to work when you know you're needed. And they respond on their own. Uh so I just wanted everybody to know, uh I appreciate you, I I appreciate all that you do for our community and working as a team the way it's supposed to be done. I I'm grateful, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. And and again, from this bench up here, as I said at the start of the meeting, we can't say enough about all of our uh departments and services uh that have put effort forth and and we're and date gratitude to all of you.
I would like to comment.
Go right ahead.
Uh as tragic as this weekend's events have been, uh we've learned a lot. Everybody has said, you know, there's no doubt that everybody did everything they could and it's one of the finest communities we can live in. However, we did learn a lot, uh and we can improve upon it and those department heads that came forward with issues like Kathleen and the coroner and. You know, we gotta keep working on this to make this better. So don't let it lie because the sun's out today. If there's something we talked about today and you're strong, feel strong enough about it, let's make, let's get to resolve on some of these. We had some failures at EMA, it took me a minute to get to EMA, uh uh lightning took out some componentry on the generator, we were able to use it. So those who, the department heads that feel they need help, uh you know, in getting through this as far as making things better, let's keep on it. Let's let's go after it and uh it it doesn't seem anything major, it just seems like a lot of little things that we could really tidy up and uh. So I encourage department heads to look at what happened, review what happened and act on it. But beyond that, I think this county came and stood up.
Absolutely, and I wanna make a mention too, you know, you and I with the EMA building.
We did.
Uh got there at eleven o'clock, was there till three thirty, four o'clock in the morning. Christine showed up from the health department, I don't think you've been mentioned yet, but you were there to do your part. Uh two o'clock in the morning or whatever time it was, it's kind of all a blur right now, but we appreciate you and your people being there uh to do your part as well, so don't wanna leave you out.
I wanna thank the sheriff for making some phone calls the other night when we were looking for some certain resources, I wanna thank you very much. And uh for for stepping out and answering phone calls and things of that nature, appreciate it.
Greg?
Yeah, I just wanna comment, you know, we worked with dispatch and the database one-on-one, but I think we're second to none here.
We appreciate that very much, and and I'm gonna say, pat the highway on the back because it does take your expertise of what you do. To get included into those first responders, but you are part of that team and I wanna make sure that that's clear here in public.
Citizens came, I mean, citizens were out helping us clear rooms, throwing in.
Well, I know I cut my way into town that night, so.
I wanna, I wanna throw out Patricksburg Volunteer Fire Department, kudos to those gentlemen. I was trying to come across two forty-six and they were cutting trees out just as fast as they could go and and they were still out at three thirty in the morning, so. Kudos to everybody that got up out of bed and went and did something.
I have one more thing, gentlemen, that's not weather related, that my office just called and reminded me that, if I may, I need an auction date. We have the, our surplus items are on gov deals, not now, as well as uh maintenance department for the rest of the county. Only thing we need is an advertised date and that's our choice, so whatever Sheila says, we need to advertise and then it can be placed uh for sale online.
We'll let Sheila take care of that advertisement and she can communicate with your office to when that can be put out.
So did it, her convenience, whenever, the set date?
If you have a date to me by Friday, we can have it in next week's paper on the twelfth.
How long do you need?
Ten days. So you couldn't, if you have it in on the twelfth, you can have it anytime after the twenty-second, which is a Saturday, so let's go with Monday the twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Like that, Gary?
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
I let everyone else talk and I couldn't, couldn't really. Everyone was great at work, but um just to give you that data, what went on with with EMS, we had all five ambulances out within an hour. Which, as you know, cut your way into town, that's impressive. My guys had to, my guys had to get into town also. So we had all five ambulances out, uh rescue was um en route within minutes with heavy equipment, uh skid steer, one of the guys has skid steer, so he brought it. They were cutting trees, picking up skid steer just to get to the to the campground, so um so that that worked well for us. So yeah, we had uh fourteen people out that night as far as EMS. One of our guys brought our mass casualty trailer out with his personal vehicle just cause all the other equipment was already on scene. So every- everything just, it it's controlled chaos, it's how you control it. And you can never uh, you can never prepare for the exact scenario, so if that to overcome, then everybody in the county. Every emergency responder was involved in one way or another. Uh the command post requested dispatch to get ahold of the outline, fire departments and bring them in to to stage closer. To help cover because Old Valley was completely out of park, the Old Valley Fire Department was all their first lot of park. Station sixteen, which is plain township, they were out of park. So all the other fire departments responded and started covering their, the areas that the resources weren't completed in. So every fire department in this county did an awesome job. And then.
We know what Golden County does, you know, we really did.
Yeah.
Everybody.
It's amazing the people that just came to with with four blisters, I mean, or I'm sorry, with chainsaw, heavy equipment. Here comes the cavalry with the highway department just one piece after another coming down that road. So, I mean, I know what everyone else has said, but we couldn't, couldn't have done a better job.
No, again, we're glad to hear that and I wanna thank all the departments for staying in contact with me throughout the weekend. I I don't think there's a department here that I didn't have contact with some way or another, uh either with a phone call, email, uh whatever it may be. To keep us informed, to where I could pass that information on to whoever needed uh that I needed to, so I appreciate the department heads for for doing that. Sheila, do you have anything, you're next up on the list?
The DNR thing.
Yeah, that's, I got it right here in front of me. Uh Joel, anything else?
Good, Bob?
Uh yeah, I think we all recognize the Spencer Skills Corporation too, cause they're sitting buses out there, brought the people.
Absolutely.
Remind issue to everybody else, I think still, still needs a pat on the back too.
Absolutely.
Just absolutely, so we don't forget them.
It was amazing how anything we requested from the command post.
She was up.
All the EMA and and Chad presented, John, and just, hey, I I need something to start getting these people on the union ends here, that's cool, let's see. There was even, you know, ISP, ICOs, I didn't even know we had that many ICOs in the state. Good night. Um everybody was there, so it was great to see other agencies outside of Golden County coming in to help as well, we appreciate that.
Absolutely. Got two final things here, we'll get get it wrapped up. We approved the DNR money, uh and Patricksburg wasn't on there, so there's seven departments, but we have the discretion. And and this is a perfect reason why we need to do this, there was a total of thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars and seventy-four cents. We give fifty percent of that to the departments and the other half goes back to the general fund. At our discretion, we can give the full amount to these seven departments at an amount of fifty-one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So I would like to go ahead and make that a a motion that we give each of these departments, all seven, including Patricksburg, Chris, even though you weren't on the list. We we, Sheila's done some work on that, uh so I would like to see us go ahead and approve fifty-one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. To the seven uh fire departments that are on this list, uh do I hear that motion?
I thought you made a motion.
I did make, I'm sorry, Bob, I need a second, thank you. Motion by myself, second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So there's that back, Sheila?
That's, do we need to rescind the last motion? Cause the original motion was to give him the three thousand and some apiece, so this is an adjustment to that amount, so we'll just make the adjustment to the fifty-one fifty-seven.
From the eighteen, or it was three thousand is what it was, yes, yep. Let me talk one more thing and then I'll have you discuss that, yes. Joel and I met last week, uh in administrative function with Sheriff White uh to discuss a new home for our EMA director. And we have come up with a plan to move him into the sheriff building, uh the other half of that unit is empty. Uh there is more than enough room for a bathroom, uh an office, a conference area and and all of his supplies in that unit. That was agreed to by the sheriff, uh myself, Joel, and I've spoke to Bob about it and and he feels that that is a good uh area for for Jack as well. We'd like to get all of our uh emergency services in one area. We we ran into a situation, not this particular time, but in previous times, with the, down here on the town street, the street gets so congested. That you can't move in and out of there, uh with sheriff's cars and EMA ambulances and all these different things, so. With the blessing of the sheriff to put him into that other half of the building, uh I think that that is a direction that that we need to go.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to comment, um we we discussed it and it was said that he would have the same as or better. Folks, this is gonna be better, this is gonna be a better facility than he's in, uh he'll have his backup power, he'll have more storage, he'll have his conference area. And he will be right down there with emergency services, uh bigger parking area, we get this, we get the ball rolling, it's gonna be a far better situation for Jack. It'll it'll, it'll give him room to expand, if you will, whereas right now he's kinda cubbyholed in, he doesn't. And and so this, we we talked about it against Sheriff White stepped up and said, hey, let's, you know, this is what I think and he's right, we can build a better situation, we've built a better system for him. So I think this is a good move, is it gonna happen overnight? No, but it's gonna happen. He's gonna have the facilities he needs and uh and again, this situation teaches us what we need and don't need, so uh this would've been nice to have him right down in there, don't you agree, Sheriff?
Been nice. I also wanna add that if if ever on the docket there is a opportunity for a new jail, um I think that it would be who of us to place him. Uh that office within a new jail as well, um where he has generator, he has a large office space with his own entry. He would have his own garage that has all of his stuff stored in there, um climate control as it's supposed to be and designed specifically for that purpose. If we're on the docket ever for a new jail, then I I think that uh it wouldn't be that idea for the coroner's office. Where their coolers are in there and have twenty-four hour electricity. I'd definitely coroner's office where their coolers are in there and have twenty-four hour electricity. So we don't have to be in a position where we have nowhere to store people, uh, that, that, that can happen. Um, that's just, that can happen. I don't know, I'm not one of those buildings. I'm sure if I just house whatever or stay in a managed building, then I'm fine. But, um, you know, we have a lot of people who need certain things. And if ever we decided, um, a jail's gonna be built, I think it would be nice to have everyone there. We work hand in hand anyway. When things happen, we have to communicate, we have to work together and it makes sense. Um, you know, we are one team. We're not, we, we may, uh, wear different color uniforms. We may have a different patch on our sleeve at times, our cars may look a little bit different, but we are one team. And that is public servants to Owen County.
There's no I in team.
No, 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 there's not a I at all. You almost made me say a Kobe Bryant thing. But, uh, you know, we are, we are one, one, uh, cohesive group that works together when bad things happen. And it's essential that we work together close hand in hand and, uh, not have to go to search each other out.
I feel strongly about this new location. We haven't really laid it out yet or, but that's the anticipation. And like I said, that's, that's, I think this is gonna be a good move, uh, getting more centrally located.
Absolutely. It's gonna take some, some additional funding, uh, with the council. Uh, I know that Polly's on board with the EMA, uh, as well as Andy. So they're gonna have to help us come up with some funding options. Uh, we've got, uh, future building fund available to us, uh, where we've been collecting rent from the armory over the years. Uh, there's a little bit of, uh, ARPA funds, but, uh, I think we've agreed and that that's the area that we need to go to. And, uh, so I think it's time that we put some, some quotes together and see what it's gonna take to make that happen. Uh, and Sheriff, with your comments, I, I, I think that that's coming down the road, uh, to deal with the problems that you have down there. Uh, I know that you and I have a meeting this week with Garmont again. Uh, so we will have that discussion and then bring that forward with, with however that plays out. So, uh, again, is there's any, any other comments here from the board? That being said, again, thanks to everyone, uh, in our departments, our community. And, uh, I'm, I'm confident that we're ready for the next storm, whatever that may be. We hope we don't see any of them.
Yeah, right.
There's no comment on the Monday morning meeting, sir?
I was going to, uh, thanks and commend all the departments and what they've done for the general public. That's all.
We'll take that comment.
I certainly appreciate it.
With that being said, Dana's gonna talk to us about our declaration that I signed, uh, yesterday.
Yes, it's been mentioned that the declaration, uh, has been signed. Um, part of the statute is to make sure that it is publicized as much as possible. And so it would be necessary to, to mention it in, in today's meeting. Um, the Indiana code, uh, designates the, uh, Board of Commissioners, uh, to be the county executive. And, um, Mr. Burton is the president of the commissioners and Indiana code does provide that the principal executive officer, Mr. Burton, uh, has the authority to declare a local disaster emergency, which activates the response and recovery aspects of all applicable local and interjurisdictional disaster emergency plans authorizes the furnishing of aid and assistance under the plans. Um, whereas on March thirty-first and April first, twenty twenty-three, a natural disaster, specifically one or more tornadoes and severe storms have devastated certain portions of Owen County, Indiana. Now therefore, uh, it is hereby declared that as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, a local disaster emergency exists in Owen County. Uh, pursuant to the Indiana code, the term disaster does include windstorm and tornado. Um, pursuant to Indiana code, the activation of the response and recovery aspects of all applicable local or interjurisdictional disaster emergency plans and authorization of the furnishing of aid and assistance under the plan, uh, is hereby ordered. All individuals are directed to, uh, A, refrain from all travel in areas of high water, down power lines and trees, debris, crossroads, comply, B, comply with necessary emergency measures, C, cooperate with public officials and disaster services forces, and D, obey and comply with the lawful direction of properly identified officers. Uh, all public offices and employees of Owen County must exercise utmost diligence in the discharge of the duties, uh, required of them during the declared emergency and in the execution of emergency laws, regulations and directives, whether federal, state or local. All individuals are called upon and directed to comply with all emergency measures to cooperate with public officials and disaster service forces in executing emergency operation plans and to obey and comply with the lawful direction of properly identified officers. All operating forces, uh, will direct their communications and requests for assistance and operations directly to the Owen County Emergency Operations Center. This direction, the declaration will remain in effect for seven days unless one consent to extension is given by the entire Board of Commissioners. Um, and two, it is, uh, in fact extended by further executive order by resolution of the Board of Commissioners or terminated by the president, uh, of the board. Uh, this, this declaration shall be filed with the clerk of the, uh, of the Owen County Board of Commissioners in conformity with Indiana code. And the declaration was effective of, of March thirty-first, it was signed on April second. Um, so I would just say that as far as an extension, it would be determined if any departments are going to expend additional resources after that seven days. If it seems like everything will be handled within that seven days, then this, it would be fine. But, uh, since it is limited to seven days, uh, if there will be expenses related to the storm past that, then it, we're, uh, should, uh, extend the, the declaration for additional time.
So department heads, as, as you've heard that, read, as you go about your weekly business and we're still dealing with these same issues, keep that in mind. If we go over the seven days and we're still dealing with the resources to deal with this particular storm that happened Friday night, obviously if there's another one that comes in through this week, it will be a separate declaration, separate from the one that we just had. So anyway, keep that in mind. That's, thank you, Dana. And I've got one more thing here, uh, commissioners, laying here in front of me. The prosecutor, uh, has asked, their office has asked to be part of the Toshiba, uh, copy and printing, uh, contract. They originally were not because they had newer equipment. Uh, Toshiba has agreed to add them and they are going to take their existing equipment in on trade. So it requires a signature, uh, one for the copier itself and one for the maintenance agreement. So I just need approval for, uh, my signature so they hear a motion to approve prosecutor contract with Toshiba.
I'll make a motion for, for the prosecutor's, either Toshiba.
A motion by Joel, clear second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that motion, I'll.
So they need funding, wasn't in their budget?
It wasn't in their budget. Well, they'll have to come to the council then for, for, I'm not gonna sign this contract then until they get funding.
Okay.
Give that back to her. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody have a great day. Thank you. Looks like the highway will go past seven days. Yeah. Hey, Greg? Hey, Greg?